Do the approval of minutes, please. Looking for a motion?
Move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of approval of the regular meeting minutes from March 11th, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, motion carried. Did everybody get the minutes from the special meeting of March 25th?
Yes.
Looking for a motion to approve those?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes of the special meeting?
Yeah, I got one correction, anyway. On page two of three in the first instance of Jeff Glassberg indicates the building's about 160,000 square feet with a $952,000 budget. And I just think we should clarify, because that's going to become important, that it's a $952,000 O and M budget.
Buildings, operation, and maintenance.
Right. That becomes an important statistic. And in the last page, last point, I indicated as having suggested that we hold our vote along with the city's vote for the police station. And I'm not sure I would have recommended that. I think I would have recommended talking to them in the city about that. Oh, I know that, but I'm just saying, I'm not sure I recommended that we do that.
So your recommendation, you would talk with them?
Yes. That we discuss with the city whether we should co-mingle the votes, or co-locate the votes, or whatever.
Any other discussion? Is everybody okay with Neil's updates?
Yeah.
Yes.
Hearing no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote on the approval of the minutes from the special meeting of March 25th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Is there any public communication tonight? Go ahead, Carol.
I'm hoping this year that there could be a clarification of the reporting law of where it talks about having a summary of the auditor in the annual reports. And to really clarify by law, what does that mean? Because Superintendent O'Brien continues to submit, you know, just the facts that where you can pick it up. And I believe that the law is requiring more than that. Just some common sense, because if it requires you to get it 10 days in advance, the summary of the auditor. Now, I know we've kind of gone back on wording, but I don't believe it requires the audit itself in the report, just the summary. And so what the voters weren't able to know this year is that FY '11 wasn't completed until the fall. I remember the exact month of last year, 2012. And I think information left out is really important to be transparent and, you know, the rights of the voter. The other thing is, I saw that you're going into evaluation. I didn't bring the email, but Condos office gave me permission to quote them. But we have a superintendent who created a job-
I got it. Did you, you said Condos, do you mean Secretary of State in Condos?
Yeah, Secretary of State.
Thank you, okay.
Yeah. We have a superintendent that created a job description over an elected treasurer's position. And Secretary Condos said that that is not lawful, and that I would have to go to court to get a ruling on it. So I'm coming to you. I really don't want to go to court, but I do believe in the separation of powers and the checks and balances is one thing that I'm very concerned that our district at this point is lacking. And then there's one more. And pretty much I'll give-
Before you go on-
Oh, go ahead.
I'm really trying to listen to you, and I'm taking notes, and I want to know what you're saying. And I don't understand what you're saying. So the first thing you said was that the laws about the report in the annual, the auditor's reports in the annual report cover what we do, or what we have done, or? I didn't understand what you're saying.
No.
I don't know if we need to talk about this afterwards, or you seem to always want to be in the public record. So I want to make sure I get it right.
Yeah, well, consecutively-
Are you asking something, or are you telling us?
Yes, according to title, and if you look at Title 16563, the school board is responsible in number 10, shall prepare and distribute to the electorate, and it lists all these reports 10 days before the annual meeting.
Okay.
And the one for, we did get the elected treasurer's report, it was missing from there, so we did get that in the annual report. But the summary of the auditor's report continues to be absent.
Okay. Thank you.
So is what you're saying, Carol, is that you'd like to see the summary letter from the auditor's report in the prior year completed audit, as well as the current year's midstream audit? Is that what you're saying is missing?
Well, I think there needs to be discussion on exactly what they want.
What do you mean "they"? It's not our place to interpret state law. It's our place to list, to put down what the law says we need to put down. We put the auditor's statement in the form of a letter. You said there's something missing. What was missing?
The auditor's statement wasn't, hasn't been, in the annual report. The superintendent's office submits a statement, you know, saying, I don't have it right here with me, but it comes from the superintendent's office. It's not coming from the auditor. You know, the auditor may want to make a statement on why audits are still late. And, you know, we have talked about, and Superintendent O'Brien has given an explanation to interpreting what the auditors are saying.
Well, and this board has actually accelerated the pace of audits and offered you the opportunity to hear the results of the audit. And on more than one occasion, you've actually left the room when that was on the agenda, before we were teed up to talk about it.
For the last one, 2012.
We have definitely heard you. I mean, I personally have heard you about the pace of the audit, and I think it's important. So if there's a letter from the auditor that's missing from the annual report, that's as much on us as anybody else. We can get the, you know, the color letter from the auditor's report.
Right. And I don't think it has to be for the prior year, because anyway-
Well, I heard you say the prior year in 2011 wasn't there. That's what I heard you say, so that's why I heard that one.
Right. The, this year, in 2012, fiscal year '11 was completed. I believe according to law, that letter should have been in the annual report, even though it wasn't the prior year, it wasn't current, it was very late, just because the taxpayers had the right to know that. So-
Okay, thank you.
So that-
You were going on to something else?
Yeah. And I know, I know it frustrates you, but I want to read an email from Tom O'Brien for 12/18. He sent, he sent me an email that said, "Here's another piece of the game. How goes the gathering of information being requested?" So that's why I feel I have to not just be public, but I have to be recorded. And try to give you guys an understanding that I do not feel safe with this administration. So anyways, in November, I handed out some numbers to you. And what I have done, because I didn't get an answer, I had some correspondence with Superintendent O'Brien. But I connected with a person who has the expertise in school budgets. And according to law, any surplus, and we've talked about that, any surplus has to go back into, as revenue, the next post-budget, as revenue, unless it's voted on by the voters. So this person, he gave me a formula. And so I have just attached here the school budgets that I've taken the numbers from. They were actual school budgets that were sent to me from the administration. And so when you see handwriting on there, it's not mine. Someone in the administration was trying to help me follow surpluses, and I'll get back into revenue. I didn't understand, so I connected with someone else who gave me a formula. And so I went through, and I did it. I was able to follow in the end, oh, where is it? There was over, there was almost 2 million surplus. And in the end, I found through FY '8 and FY '11, only 739,777 came back in as revenue, leaving a difference of $1,221,080. So anyway, I'm just going to give this to you, and-
Anybody looking for any further discussion? Carol's prepared question.
I do have a question.
No, go ahead.
Have you taken the district up on the offer to meet with them and understand the budget numbers? We've offered it twice.
I have offered to go into a meeting with a pool in, probably Bill Talbot, Brad James, Mark Goddinger. I think I have represented, I think at this point, I can't tell you, you have no clue where I'd walked in asking questions. And so, yeah, if those guys, because they've been a part of it, if they're willing to-
I have no knowledge of those individuals having a discussion with this board about the financial position of this school.
No, they've just been a part of the circle where I don't get answers if I go to the email.
But we've tried, you know, we've tried, we've tried to ask you to come and speak and examine the numbers, and see it through the lenses that Kathy, who manages our budgets, sees it, and you've not taken us up on it. And, you know, so you continue to reach out to state agency staff representing a position, I'm not sure on behalf of whom, but it's really unfair. I feel like you might not be doing all your homework internally before going out and talking to various state officials from Department of Ed or the Secretary of State. I mean, you know, as far as I see, I've not been convinced that we're not operating lawfully here. Maybe I have no clue.
And, no, seriously, maybe I don't have any proof. But by law, I do have reasonable time to approach my school board, though, and to ask questions.
And you're doing, and you are doing just that, and that's excellent. But I posed the question, and I think I know what the answer is, but we've offered to try and explain this, and have you taken us up on that offer?
No.
Okay. I just wanted that publicly stated.
What's that?
I wanted that publicly stated.
Yeah.
I have one comment. I'm listening to what you're saying. Look at page 34 of the annual report that was published, it does show balance forward as part of the school budget. So I'm not sure where, what we're missing.
Well, that was a change, because before, if you look at the ones that I gave you-
Well, I'm not sure, but I'm talking about what we just approved as voters in the district clearly presents a balance forward as a revenue in the budget that was voted on at town meeting day and approved. So I guess my question to you is, did you have a question with respect to the material that was presented on page 34 of the annual report?
Right. There are a couple of questions, because historically, the pattern has been that there's a pretty significant surplus, and then it's very difficult to watch that surplus come back as revenue. Because there wasn't a balance forward, that was taken out when Superintendent O'Brien became a superintendent, and he put in two different lines. He put in audit surplus, and another line was current projected year. And so this is a change, but what's interesting about that specific school budget is now the proposed and the actual are right on the dime. I mean, they both come, there's no surplus, there's no deficit, it ends in zero. So that means, you know, that there was, you go from, so that means, so my question is, so where did the $450,000 come from? When you add up the numbers in the column of the actual, they add up to zero. Does that make sense?
I'm not sure we're going to get to that level of detail at this meeting. The only point I wanted to make was, I believe that it does represent, show a balance forward as a revenue, which appeared to be your concern. So I believe that's, but yes.
The revenues? Right, as long as they are the real, the real number, you'll find the revenues in the school board budgets, and you can compare them with the auditor's revenue. That, they're different numbers. And also, the $450,000 FY '13, I requested it, and so I'm assuming it's not finished. So it's very difficult to, you know, where does the number come from? And if FY '13 is completed, I requested it.
Is there any board communication?
Hearing none, I'm going to move action item 7A1 up so that we can approve the bills and director's orders, and work on signing them while we're going through the rest of the presentation, in an effort to try to have it done by the end of the year. So I'd be looking for a motion for approval of bill and director's orders for $301,503.66.
Is there a second on that motion? Is there any discussion? Is there anything questionable, or anything that looks good to state? Hearing no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the bills and director's orders, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. We do not have an educational presentation, do we? Tom Ely, you're up.
All right. The music department had their encounter at the school very successful. And the band trip, or the band had, well, the entire music department has the trip to Williamsburg upcoming this Thursday. We do that 5:30 a.m., and then get back at 8:30 on Sunday. It's a dedication trip, so we will be performing down there, and we'll be judged. So that should be a good experience. Sports are enrolling right now. There have been some scrimmages in softball, lacrosse, and baseball that I know of. And, yeah, with, I think it was three weeks ago, the school hosted a guest presentation about motivational speaker, Kevin Brooks. But we hosted it with Mount A, so it was kind of both schools over here watching that. And then afterward, we broke up into groups and discussed the presentation and how we can combat the growing youth problem in our communities. And I'd say it was moderately successful. It was difficult to be grouped up with students from Mount A, because we just don't, we don't socialize with them very much, and generating deep, meaningful discussion with them was, you know, hard to do at first. But there were some productive topics that came out of it, and some ideas for how we can, I guess I, combat that growing problem. This last week was spirit week at our school, and there was a lot of participation in that. Assemblies each day in different blocks throughout the day, culminating in a kind of celebration of all of our sports on Friday. And student council had a bottle drive on the 30th, and raised over $400 on that, so that was very successful. And I believe that covers us for scholarships and for home improvement here, so that was pretty good. And I think that's all I've got.
Thank you. Who wants to go first?
I'll continue with the 29th. At nine o'clock that morning, we had 1,400 students in this building, all of Mount A High School, all of ours, and four, I think there were 300 students all at the UBS, or over here, play or play. Got a little crowded, so I took 200 kids, and we went over to Mount A for a presentation, middle school presentation with Bruce Seaman and Hobbs, all radio personalities about bullying, abuse of bullying. And again, we had the interesting opportunity of spending some time with Mount A kids. It was, yeah, it was a little challenging when we had comments, the kids, our kids usually had more chances to look around Mount A. Someone walked in the door, and someone said, gee, it smells like a swimming pool in here. It smelled like the middle school after it's been clean. And, but it was a morning that was worthwhile, although there were a couple of incidents, we talked about the high school, but on the way back, as the, one of the buses went through the intersection, the four corners opened by Crystal, the bus driver got sick and was quite strictly pulled off the side of the road. Two of our teachers in particular, Sean Neri and Eric Fries, managed the situation quite well, but they had to stay there with the kids and the driver until the, until Betsy came, and the EMTs came to care, the driver, Betsy came, provided another bus to get us home. So it had a little bit of adventure to the day. The reports were that the students handled it remarkably well. Those other buses respected the seriousness of the situation. Little young students being really proud of our kids and our teachers, and we were very proud of the way the kids managed their behavior in a guest role at another school. Their attention and their manage showed up clearly in that particular event. Immediately afterwards, and the reason I wasn't on that bus is that I took four kids and three teachers up to UBM, to the Vermont Association of Middle Level Educators Conference on bullying and student voice. And we closed out the, their conference day with a panel presentation that went quite well. Our four kids were really well received. They responded well to the questions that were asked, and likely they represented both what happens here in the school in terms of our behavior planning process, and shared responsibility for collective or individual behaviors very well. That was reflected by the comments that we got, a couple of the other speakers had asked to come visit the building. And I was asked to participate in a Vermont edition conversation today on bullying. As it turned out, I wasn't called on to do very much, because the calling from the rest of the Vermont audience was so hot. But it was nice to be asked to participate in that. Let's see. We sent, we have not, since we have been involved in EL, in Expeditionary Learning, we have not participated very much with the local middle school educational organizations. But this year, I sent the entire, and I have every team, five teachers, to the New England League of Middle School Conference in Providence last week. And that was important for two reasons. One is they got them out into a larger setting than just, than just here, and their colleagues. But it also gave one team the opportunity to travel and work together on a extended basis. We gained, they gained as a result of that professional opportunity. Presumption is that next year, next year, setting a great team, we'll get the same opportunity. We've been working on Green Mountain Star, which is the state's alternative, the alternative route the state is taking to the elimination of the principal and half the staff for continued presence on-
School improvement.
On the school improvement as a result of the D cap scores. And while this is our third year, second year of school improvement, third year of being on the list, we are also, I don't know if comfort is the word, but I know seeing that a couple of other high schools have been on for eight years, which doesn't solve the problem, but puts things, puts things in perspective. The green, as part of the Green Mountain Star, we spent the fall doing a whole school analysis, analysis of 64 characteristics of quality schools, and have come up with, we're working on a list of six right now, in small groups, in order to make a plan that will be presented to the state, of course, due this spring. The last item is that we, over the weekend, it was Vermont History Day, and we had a number of students who participated, the hooky staff, as usual, coordinated this. Normally, it's a high school event for us. We did end up with two middle school groups going, one eighth grader, and then a group of four seventh graders. And one received a second, one received a third, and both groups qualified for the National History Day. And one received a second, one received a third, and both groups qualified for the National History Day activity that will occur in the season this summer. There was more, the hooky reported more successes as well, so I have a list of all of those. Yours?
I think the high school took the first, the second, and the three thirds.
Something like that.
That's what it was. And we just found out about that this morning.
Two things, the capstone, the middle school capstone activities are going quite strongly. These are some perform, equivalent of performance-based graduation requirements for a stepping up into high school. We're going to see, we're all learning at the same time about how those work. And two of those were the history, one of those was the history project that was presented on Title IX. And then the last item I have is that the Commodore Parent Teacher Group has continued to do remarkable support for us. And their second annual trinkets and treasures gym sale was this past weekend. It makes it sound as if it's a one-day activity, but clearly it's taken a lot more work than that. But they doubled the amount of money they put in to five thousand dollars, which they have turned, not this amount, but they have supported at least three student groups that I'm aware of in their request for some financial support, support for either classroom or inter-school activities. So many thanks to our teacher group, Christina, who is the representative here. She's also one of the initiators, has been with it all along, has been great support.
A lot of your work on it, it's good. So hopefully, you know, we started the enrichment staff teacher grants, like last year's money this year. We only had two teachers apply for a grant, so maybe with this amount of money, more.
Be careful of what you wish for.
I know. It's good.
I don't know if I can ask that. I'd like to start off by mentioning that Matt Abraham got their first Shrine Team nominee for the Shrine All-Star Football Game. And he happens to go to Virginia, Wade Steel. And so that's a Shrine Team nod, and that's, that's pretty exciting. Just so you don't think I'm all athletics, we've put a lot of planning into a poetry day reading. It's the Eighth Annual Poetry Day Reading, April is National Poetry Month. And Matt Schlein is, it's on April fifteenth from one forty-five to two forty-five. And Matt usually gets a couple ringers, a couple of local poets, they're, they just grow on trees around here. And the kids read, and it's really a fairly spectacular day if you catch the right, you know, the right barometric pressure. That's one forty-five to two forty-five on April fifteenth. So, like, I've got a couple of things that we are going to hand out about strictly academics. Peter was mentioning the capstones and how the capstone project at the eighth grade is transitioning to the freshman year, which begins your progression to the performance-based graduation requirements, which are really pretty cool. And, but I think what goes unstated in Peter's, in Peter's report to you is the fact that we worked so hard on transition. And it's been, probably, we've had more data about the eighth to ninth grade transition than any other topic since Peter and I have been together. And it's worked well. For instance, we share a lot, Peter works very hard at a number of transitional programs, if I can call them that. And I try to share, I went down and talked about taking Cornell notes in the eighth grade so that they'd be more prepared to enter into this capstone project. It was a nice interchange where they're getting a vision of what kind of academic rigor we actually do have at the high school. And we're getting an opportunity to see what they're bringing to the table. So it makes the seven through twelve idea of a school all, all more efficient. The Kevin Brooks presentation, Kevin Brooks is a young man, he's not that young anymore, but he's still young-looking. He was paralyzed in a car crash, paralyzed from the chest down. He was, he was drunk and he was going over ninety miles an hour on a wet road in Vancouver and killed his best friend who was in the car seat with him, next to him. And he lives with that for the rest of his life. His message was more or less, and you know, time to leave, you tell me if I've got this accurate. He asked all, all the students in the audience to wiggle their toes. And the reason was, that's what he can't do, he can't wiggle his toes. And he uses that as a way to remind yourself to make good decisions. And so, you know, if you're, if you've got a decision to make, if you're going to get into a car with a drunk driver, just wiggle your toes, and that might be enough to remind you of, of his message. In the midst of that, you know, and a lot of talk about what it's like to be paralyzed and the kinds of surgeries he had to undergo and all. We had a young woman, a junior, just pass right out in the stands. And we were in the, in the varsity gym. And I got up there, she was blue, and it was a little scary. We had immediate response. Mark Powers, the science teacher, was the first one there and got her stabilized and in a better posture than face down on the bleachers. And we had Joe Grant and a local, one of our local officers responded within a minute and a half of trying to figure out. The first thing was, nobody could recognize her because she looked awful. And so Matt Abraham was calling over to Mount Ave to school nurse to see, you know, who this was. And when we finally looked, we said, oh, sorry, it's ours. And, but the most remarkable thing was the maturity of our kids, standing up and clearing that whole side of the bleachers, about half the bleachers on the, on the east side. And very quietly going over to the other side of the speaker and sitting down and allowing the speaker to actually get back on message as this young woman was taken out by the EMTs. It's kind of remarkable when you see how, how measured our kids are in their response to emergencies. It really, it really is remarkable. Echoed what Peter had to say about the middle school kids, I was very proud of them. It's interesting, we went, I took a team down to the New England Secondary School Consortium, we're in the League of Innovative Schools. I know it sounds like the League of Miraculous Gentlemen or something, but it's, I wish I hadn't used the word league. But we are a member, we're one of the founding members, and we are doing a lot of cool things. What's an interesting thing, besides the fact it was in Northborough, Massachusetts, which Massachusetts is the only New England state that's not participating in the New England Secondary School Consortium. That irony notwithstanding, we went down there and really had a productive day and a half. And probably culminating in our case with the recognition that Cumberland, Rhode Island, the high school Cumberland, Rhode Island is doing almost the same array of initiatives that we are in their attempt to transform their school down to standards-based practices. And their emphasis on PBIS, their emphasis on pro-social programming, on real-time, flux-time interventions and academic performance. And it came back remarkably that their tough conversations, and they're about a year behind us in developing a performance-based graduation requirement system, but their tough conversations are about grading right now. Because if you have a standards-based system, you don't get any kind of academic credit until you actually perform to the standard. And so seat time becomes more and more relevant, performance becomes more relevant. And you get, you get conversations like, do you give zeros? They don't. Why? Because it destroys a kid's chance, you know, on grades, a zero does an enormous amount of damage, all right, to a kid's grade point average if you figure it along the traditional path. Another thing, they have a conversation, how much is homework count? They counted at ten percent max. And you know, we, and when we have people practicing at, you know, sixty percent homework grade, you got to realize that we have to take a look at our practices. I'm not saying we're changing our practices, but that kind of interchange and interplay of ideas is really dramatic when you get somebody from another state really trying to reach out and talk to you. Along those lines, LaMoyale Union High School is coming up on the sixteenth? On the sixteenth, and that'll be on Thursday, right?
Tuesday.
Was it Tuesday? I don't know, is that?
It's Tuesday.
That's not, not one of my strange calendars. LaMoyale Union's coming down, their school approximately our size. Superintendent, principals coming, teachers, kids, and they're coming to visit us to take a look at what we do in morning meeting and callbacks and take a look at our PBGR system, the nascent system as it's being developed. And we're very proud that we get that kind of feedback from other people in the state, people wanting to come take a look at us. The other good news is that we're in a data consortium, the whole state of Vermont, and we're finally starting to get accurate, we thank, accurate data on the continuation rate, which is the number of kids going on to college and staying in college, either two- or four-year accredited schools. It does not count trade schools, unfortunately, does not count. One of our more successful students is a, is in a plumbing apprenticeship. They don't count that, even though he'll be soon able to buy and sell me. And, you know, and so it's a little silly in some ways, but what it is, is that we're employing a data mining company that goes out and contacts all the colleges and junior colleges in the United States and gets the data and sends it to Vermont. We've got this guy, I swear to God, he's, that's the craziest thing I've ever seen. He scrubs all the data and like, he's got piles and mounds of data and computers and it's just, and he scrubs it to get rid of all the duplicate records, all the aberrant records and all these things. He came out, and I'm sorry, I forgot the list, it's on my desk. It's, we came out a tenth of a percentage point behind Middlebury in continuation rate. And we're like, it's sixty, sixty-five point seven, and there it's sixty-five point eight. And we're ahead of Mount Abraham, and we're ahead of Otter Valley as far as continuation, continuation rate goes. We're on the positive side of the, of the average mark of the, of the mean. And it's really interesting that, that we're doing that well. And the first thing Susan Husk sees, as she's looking over the list of names that the state brings to us, is, oh, we missed four. You guys missed four. So I said, so do the math. And we're up to sixty-seven or something like that. I still not up to the eighty percent we, we targeted, but we're, we're making progress. And as a state, our continuation rate is phenomenal. It's phenomenal, it's very good. Last things?
Wave number one.
Yep.
Does that continuation data include students that are at the tactical center?
Yes.
As residents of Virginia State?
Yes.
Because they're doing the same thing at the tactical center?
Yes.
But they're reporting differently?
Yeah, they're reporting, and that's what we've come to understand. We count, we count the guys from Hanniford's because they're our.
And so do they.
Yeah, and so do they, and that.
Okay.
One other question, given that it's beginning of April, any sense of secondary planning among the seniors and graduates?
Yes, we, it's, it comes to us anecdotally, sort of, because there's a lot of, right now, there's a lot of kids who are still in the pipeline and they've been waitlisted. We, it seems pretty healthy right now. We've got kids in the running for Middlebury. Got kids making decisions between the Honors College at UVM, Middlebury College, for instance. I think Hamilton, we've been accepted at Dickinson, Syracuse, Northeastern, Saskatchewan. I mean, so it's, it's your usual exciting time, but there's a lot of kids that haven't sugared off and just made the decision. And Bates is another one, so, and there's a lot of kids going to UVM. And with good reason, because they're getting better and better help from UVM. I don't, next month, I'll actually have some percentages to roll out. Right now, it's sort of anecdotal, but when you see a kid in the hall, you go, hey, where are you going? And, and usually the conversation is, you know, big sigh, I think, I'm going, you know, I'd really like to go, you know? And it's an exciting time. It's an exciting time, I wish we could package it and show it to seventh and eighth graders. I wish somebody could follow us around with a camera, that would make a difference. So I wish I could answer that more completely. I'd like to pass this around, and next month, the reason is, next month, I'd like to talk about it at the board meeting. And this is an outline of a new course that we are going to propose as the third social studies requirement. Now, this is going to go hand in hand with the new education quality standards, which are going to be asking for a yearly, a four-year continuum of all skills in, in high school. Instead of the old, oh, all you need is, all you need is three science, all you need is three math, four English. They're saying every year, you've got to have an experience in social studies, math, English, science, et cetera, I think phys ed even, which is going to change our practice. But this is a pack of coffee, and we've been talking about this for eight years. And that is that we believe that our civics program is weak. And we believe that our economics program is weak, even though we have great consumer economics and personal finance. We don't think that it's a, it's a adequate preparation for life as a citizen. And so this is the course that she's proposing. It's called Modern Citizenship: Examining and Understanding Economic and Civic Roles and Responsibility. And it is self-explanatory, but I, I thought I'd hand it out at this board meeting so that we can talk about it in depth at the next board meeting. And lastly, I was going to roll out just a little bit of news, and I've got copies of the bill, but it's nowhere near finished. Draft of S one thirty, it's in the House of Representatives, it's the new multiple pathways bill. I got off the phone with the Vermont Principals Association Executive Director, Ken Page, just a couple hours ago. And he said that it looks like the governor's pressuring people to cave on the early enrollment part of, of the bill. And that means that being able to go your senior year to college on our, on our money. He's, he's panicking, I guess, that's the word that was used. I don't mean to throw our governor in a bad light. He's really concerned that what we're going to do is, is create a marketplace in which colleges and high schools are going to be competing. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah.
And so, but everything else has succeeded flying along. They've delayed a lot of the things about personalized learning plans. We're going to be pre-K through twelve, and it was going to start in two thousand fourteen before parent conferences. And now it's two thousand fifteen at the end of November, so they're trying to slow us down, saying, take a deep breath, make sure you have it. And right now, it's going to the Finance Committee, I think, this week. But I don't have enough for everybody because there's so much paper, but anybody that wants one, this is the legislation out as of today. And the last part of the report is that the School Education Quality Standards Commission that I've been working on, we're making huge progress. And just, I'll only give you one detail. The level of detail we're at, for instance, we've really done good work on graduation requirements. But under staff, we're radically taking a look at, at teaching loads. And they said, for instance, English language should only, teachers should only have a hundred kids a year. Well, we point out that if we worked to capacity, our English teachers, the National Council Teachers of English recommend nineteen per any class where you teach writing. That would be fifty-seven, you know, a teacher would be teaching fifty-seven kids a semester, it's already a hundred and fourteen in a year. So we're saying, you know, that's, it's got to be a ballpark, it can't be an absolute. We can't have to hire a new teacher because we're fourteen students shy of, of the ideal, or heavier than the ideal. But the other thing we're talking about is that, then it goes on to say, but other teachers, don't worry, they can have a hundred and fifty a year. And even though I'm an English teacher, we're, we're saying, you know, no. That's the strength of Vermont education, is having a rational student-to-teacher ratio. That's the strength of Vermont education, is having a rational student to teacher ratio. So a lot of these things are being considered. And once this educational quality standards recommendation goes to the state school board, they're going to adopt it and is going to have the force, the policy, and if not long. So, uh, anybody that wants the update, Jill Ramek is gonna be sending me the updated version on Thursday or Friday. I'd be glad to advance it to the board if you wish. So there's a lot going on in education, really excited about stuff going on here. And, uh, and thanks for the questions about the seniors, cause that's what really makes you smile when you've got this job.
Just one sidelight from the Mount Abe trip, overheard in the hallway, two Mount Abe kids talking to each other. Boy, this place is really light. And it's clean.
I was, I was here for a four H event with my kids on Saturday. And, um, I was talking to a mother from Essex, whose kids go to Essex High School. And both her daughter remarked that, wow, what a beautiful school, I wish our school looked like this. You know, ours is like a prison compared to this one. It's good to hear that, I think.
The, the takeaway I had was, you know what? There's no tobacco spit on the walls in the bathroom. I went, I hope not.
So many thanks to Bob Worley and how he's organized. The, the guys have done a great, continue to do a great job of keeping the place clean. Uh, it's a huge load, particularly when you've got fourteen hundred kids in the building one morning, and then on Saturday, I don't know how many, five thousand dollars worth of people came through, uh, plus the car wash.
There are a lot of people here that day.
Plus the, uh, we were over a hundred people here for four H.
Baseball games, yeah.
Which, they did, she did reserve, everything was reserved. Kathy did reserve the cafeteria, and we made sure it was reserved. She didn't point out that she also needed the tables in the cafeteria. And they were all in the yard sale, so.
We found them.
We found them.
Everybody pissed in, so.
Just real quick, I have, uh, the VSA conference is scheduled for May twenty-two through twenty-four. If you haven't already indicated your, your brothers, please let us know. We'll put reservations for you. May twenty-two, evening of May twenty-two is dedicated, uh, to board members and superintendents. Rest of the conference is. Because that conference is on the twenty-second, the address is the best meeting since the fifteenth, and then it's the prior Wednesday, so maybe that'll be, uh, the information is set up to you now. And I'm pleased to report that, uh, as of April fifth, it's the eleventh year in a row all of our budgets in the district pass.
So this is our regular monthly, um, budget to actual, just for you. So I had a question for you about the pathways to college. The schools would pay for those classes, right?
Well, as, it's, that's how it's proposed. It's, uh, what happened last year was that the, uh, dual enrollment was, uh, gonna be funded. The funding was gonna follow the student, and it effectively killed the legislation. And, uh, and then they flipped it on the, uh, school choice, where the money wouldn't follow the student. And so we're hoping that the finance committee doesn't do that. Because right now, for two years, the funding for either the vast or dual enrollment, and it, and it looks, like I said, they're gonna chop out the, the general early college option. Both of those for two years are gonna be funded by the state. After two years, we have to find the funding to be able to, uh, finance that, so.
We did have two of our teachers up at Burlington College today looking at an economics course and how we might be able to offer that year for credit at Burlington College, obviously.
In other words, you, you get a, you get a huge discount if you provide the teacher for an embedded college course here. So Steve Warzak was up talking shampoo about being that guy. And Bill Vandward.
All right, so here's our regular, um, budget to actual statement. Uh, this, uh, the second column, actually, the actual expenses includes all of the bills, including the ones that we approved tonight. And the first column, of course, is our budget. Um, the column encumbrances, um, we have in here encumbered all of the salaries for, um, all of the staff in the school, and, uh, we encumbered social security. So, um, when we're looking at the amount we're gaining to spend, it's typically, and at this point in the school year, it's mostly benefits. So we'll see, we'll see some big numbers as we go forward in the health insurance column that, that are spent, and that health insurance, um, includes benefits for teachers through, um, July and August, because that's the year for teachers. So a lot of categories were, um, some of them are getting pretty, we're getting down to the end. We really have April paying.
Kathy, page one. Are these large, unanticipated workers' comp expenses?
So workers' comp, um, I don't distribute to all accounts until the end of the year because it's a ratio, uh, individual line of salaries to total salaries. Well, that's not like a rate that I would apply, it's just a ratio. So if you look at, um, if you turn the page, language errors, there's nothing in workers' comp. There's nothing in part, there's a dead dissection that we didn't have.
Okay. Keith just pointed that out, yeah, thank you. That draws the eye in.
It does draw the eye, and I had a online list of things to mention.
Does everyone understand encumbrances?
So encumbrance would be, um, a teacher had a contract for a certain amount, um, pay for the whole school year and since they have the contract, um, so we put in the encumbrances to balance what you have in your contract to pay.
As opposed to actually already spent.
Right.
It's as good as spent.
We have to enforce that comp to pay what's being named under the. In some areas, we see that there's a credit, you know, being named, so that means the teacher may use pay-study then there's some extra amount for other work, like curriculum work or something over and above their contract. And so if we turn to page, um, if we turn to page six, I'll just have a special ed for a minute. Um, so we see, and in the middle of the category there, tuition, we are already over budget on two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And we do have, um, some more tuition to pay until the end of the year. Some other areas, it sounds like we have a new student. Um, we actually do have a new student, but, um, you know, this is because of the needs change between the, um, the, 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 and now.
So a budget, the budget is obviously finalized by the beginning of March, but we do placement. Oftentimes, we don't complete those placements till after. And if we didn't propose those placements since December, they wouldn't show up in the budget. And we had, uh, at least a two hundred bucks dollar item, uh, that falls into that category that others have left.
We just had a kid move in from Chittenden County that we're not gonna be able to serve. And he's gonna have to have a stay put in, uh, in a Chittenden County residential program that we're gonna have to pay for. So when those things happen, it's, it's sort of a bitter pill, because you really were required to accommodate the kids you know, and the kids you're trying to flex your services to. And when these things happen, I mean, it's, it's just something happens.
I think Kathy's had one moved out.
Had a bus, the bus.
And then just to remind the board that we do get reimbursed for about fifty-six percent of these expenses over and above, um, some of the other things that you see. I think if the students, we spend more than fifty thousand on a student, we'll get ninety percent on that expense as well. So I would anticipate that, when we're looking at revenues, that we would be over, and we're going to be over in special ed.
The revenue shows that it's currently over, isn't necessarily going to be the end result of the balance, because there'll be some revenue generated as well.
Right, right. And, yeah, it shows well that we're over by a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. And by the end of the year, that meant it was probably going to be, um, I would trust. Just looking at what we need to pay on health insurance, some other benefits.
The state, by the way, is not happy with how much we spend on special ed. I mean, regardless of our reimbursement, we're still having to come up with a plan on how to spend less. And that's district-wide, it's not just the state.
But yet, we're still legally in the private service.
Absolutely. Yeah, not only that, we're legally mandated to have, to serve a kid till the twenty-two, but we get whacked on the, uh, on the NECKLEB system for having kids stay five years. So it's an inter-.
Yeah.
It's interesting.
Did you have any questions?
Uh, yeah, but if you wanna go through that part first, that's fine.
So looking at maintenance on page ten. At this point, and we are over budget in technical services, over budget in building and payment, dual and all. So I would assume that this, you know, it says now that we have the eighty thousand we need to spend. So I would assume that this category will be over budget since the end of the year. And then looking at student transportation, which is the next, it's, um, page ten going to page eleven. Looking at the very top of page eleven, you know, we, so this year, we moved from adding, um, West Diver's, uh, employees to have a full contract for that job. So looking at the very top for the bus drivers, we had the budget of two eighty-four, and we have actual at two eighty-eight. So we are already over budget a little bit there. But coming down to the next, the extracurricular, um, we have budget of thirty-four, five, and, you know, actuals and a couple hundred dollars, probably all post-students are contracted. So in total, at this point, we are, um, under budget by thirty-four thousand dollars. If you remember, part of the impetus for going with the, um, contract was that we were going to, we required to buy, um, two or three buses over the next few weeks. About that, I just need to remember that, and, uh, the savings there.
I'd also like to point out that the amount of time that Ed and I spent on bus issue was generally has dropped considerably.
Will you say bus issue, I mean, buses breaking down?
That to a certain extent, staffing.
Okay.
We're not on the schedule.
We didn't really, we had, we had someone in staff who did that, and that portion was eliminated.
Bus issues. Yeah, I mean, we had, even the good bus, the number three, would have to be, he was in Jericho every three or four weeks, for, you know, for a good stretch, a time, three or four days of stretch. I, it was just, you know, we can't get service in Madison County. So all these things, you know, we're juggling all day long, and making conversations all day long. But our few drivers, and it has been one, and it has allowed us to look at more things like bus safety and.
And education.
Really?
So then on page twelve, and we're never moving to actually full transportation and debt service. So in bond interest, it shows that we have, um, ninety-one thousand in money. We do have the separate bond interest in that side of the menu, so we won't spend that. And then right there is our general fund, so we have budget of three, our actual of four, seven point seven four nine. Bus encumbrances of a million two eighty-seven, and that's just basic salaries and social security. Right now, we are, um, over budget by seventy-three now.
Kathy, can I ask a question about the transportation at home? Sprint sports transportation factor, do you have any idea?
Sprint sports?
Yeah.
So that is an expense still to be incurred, of course.
Yeah.
Yeah, um.
Do you have a, that's not really being posted by, or over budget or?
Pretty much, if you look on page ten, all of the, all of the transportation is put into contracted services. So we're not separating it out by function. If it's, you know, the wagon bus, or if it's, you know, athletics, or the dual program, we're not separating.
It's all under student transportation.
It's all under student transportation.
So right now, that's over budget by, under budget?
Well, you need to, so, so far, we've paid a hundred and sixty-six thousand on that line.
Yeah.
That whole category is about three hundred and ten thousand. If we look at, it's page two eighty-four, plus thirty-four, two hundred and twelve thousand. So we're still under budget. I would pretty damn well, we still have April, May, and June for home-to-school services.
Kathy, you are, as of nine months into the fiscal year, we're at negative seventy-three, three thirty-nine?
Just so that that encumbrance is covered, that includes all the salaries for the rest of the year.
So that's already built in?
That's built in.
So then you would project that, notwithstanding the items we talked about below, that the budget would land somewhere around seventy-three thousand dollars over budget a year?
I would think it would be more than that. There's some expenses, there's some expenses that are.
I mean, the special ed stuff is, those are big additional expenses.
All the, all the benefits from your own, from your own, some of the, just for not, so that is still postponed.
There'll probably be, uh, almost, you know, three to four times that.
So next, we, we are receiving, um, special ed payment in three weeks. So for next month's, I can, um, presentation, I can bring to you the revenues, uh, from, you know, to, to our, um, revenue between, and I send it, um, expenses to the agency of that special ed expenses on food and services.
Are the overages on the building operations side driven by any breakdowns, emergency repairs?
Yes.
I mean, just look at the, look at the column that says amount remaining and how big the numbers are.
Uh, the building repair, I think encumbrances has some doors that.
It was forty thou- forty thousand dollars of door repairs.
Does not, have not been done yet.
Some of the repairs have been made, they're not completed yet, I don't have the bill.
Fuel oil is directly attributable to the lack of insulation and the fact that we don't have a roof that seals the building.
And technical resources, those are separate.
So is this the, if we go down below the general fund and we get into the food service, um, how's the, what's going on with the food service numbers? Do we need to worry about those, or is that, Abby's hoping that, um?
Um, I don't think I have a good, uh, for right now, I was, I was catching services. Um, I still have some services to do, but I can, um, look at that for next week.
I mean, I'm just mindful that we've been absorbing their deficit over time, and this is a big number right here.
This, so that is only expensive. So we pay them under their contract, they're, remember that they give to us. Contract is just about ten, we pay that over ten, ten and so forth. Um, we actually pay nine, um, or ten. We actually, we pay nine, um, or ten, ten and so forth, they adjust, so that, you know, will be come out, um, close to what they had projected. But I can certainly take a look at that for you for next month.
Do they give you monthly reports on their revenue, or how does that work?
They give me monthly reports on expenses.
But not revenue?
They do give some monthly revenue, do that, um, it's, yes, they do give.
So I'm sorry, but just going back to that, what part of this two hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred dollars are we responsible for? Of this overage?
Okay, so this is, the two hundred and fifty, so that's not really what that is, you know, there's, see, there's nothing in there in the budget line item.
Right, right, and revised and.
So two hundred and forty-nine, nine, seventy-six, seventy-two, is what we've paid so far this year in food service expenses and contracts.
So we, we kind of pay upfront?
Yeah.
We pay them upfront for what we anticipated.
So the revenues are not, the revenues are not included.
Okay, so we get, that's not a, some of that down, most of that down.
No, I don't think they get most of it, though.
We, no, I didn't.
So why do we not budget for this, then? But that was part of contracting, right, but why do we not have a?
Because food service is a separate fund, it's not part of the general fund.
Okay, fair enough.
So we only, I mean, some schools include their food service in their general fund.
No, that's fine, but I don't, I mean, I don't have Jeff Scott, I should have brought my, if I went to kind of the end of the weeds, I should have brought my indoor parts, I could look at that budget and find it.
So, but we don't have anything to do with food service in general fund, separate fund, uh, there's no budget for that.
I guess the question is whether or not we could anticipate an impact to our fund balance or anything else, or maybe have a, maybe a.
So fun, I mean, it, um, it would not impact our fund ba- our fund balance. I mean, if we needed, if we cannot afford to just go out on a loan, who just has its own fund? So what's showing here is the carryover is only in general fund. And actually, our food service does carry any, um, deficit from this past.
Every year past, right, just.
I think it's been low since we did special ed services, but for a number of years, it would add to the deficit.
Yeah, I'm sorry for belaboring that, but that's kind of why I'm asking, it's just at some point that becomes real money that we're responsible for, so.
Oh, that was also one of the reasons, that the board decided to switch, so we could get rid of that deficit?
Mm-hmm.
So that's why I was asking about the revenue, are we, are we there because with capes services, are we producing that deficit significantly on that?
We're not, I think we're just keeping even.
So even with the two hundred and fifty thousand or?
Those are just expenses, so I don't have the revenues on this per. And then just the next item there, fund for construction, so that shows we've spent a hundred and five thousand dollars, um, on the tax and all the expenses that we've incurred so far in the building. That's only since as of, um, in July, one to now, we have actually spent a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, um, since we began, um, looking at the building renovations, um, to. None of the rest of the funds here have to be the grants that the school receives that we've had to track separately.
Thank you for bearing with me.
Any questions?
Kurt, you have any other questions?
Uh, nothing new. Unfortunately, our meeting is two days before the Annapolis meeting, so anything that I would have would be a month old. I'll try to, I'll try to update you after we press on. Now, the only thing that I guess I would comment on is, we got the same report Ed, that Ed previous gave us, um, last month. You know, as far as continuance is concerned, or continuation, not continuance, continuation is concerned. And, uh, they're showing the same kind of results, um, you know, sixty-seven to seventy percent continuation with the, you know, we're trying to do an outreach program that's not really working well yet, where we, we bring graduates back so to, so that we can get an idea of, of, you know, whether the, the training they got at the technical center actually helped them get a job, or helped them move on to a new, you know, level of training. It's not really there yet, we have a, a pretty good idea of what, um, area employers want. You know, the advisory councils are very active and actually, you know, represent a good part of the county as far as, um, businesses are concerned. But getting an idea from, uh, from like a graduate two years out, um, we're trying to actually invite them back rather than go and look for data on them, you know, and then use that data to, to modify the plan. But, you know, the, the one thing we're working on is, that our technical center is the most expensive technical center in the state, and it's because of the programs that we provide. So, um, that's a, that's a concern, and, uh, although there's some great, uh, programs, uh, you can't be everything to everybody. And I think we're coming to grips with that. The, you know, now that I said I wouldn't say anything, I'm going to start saying something. The, the other thing that was really, uh, good news is, uh, I don't know if anyone, you've heard of, about the butchering program that, that was started? It's been very successful, it was, it was filled almost immediately, there's fifty-one, uh, students, uh, there, there have been three hires already of those fifty-one students. And part of that was a, a mobile poultry processing unit, you know, PPU, to, to those that view these acronyms. Uh, we brought it down to a, a, a conference in Massachusetts, and we were, we were offered ten thousand dollars more than we paid to, for it and to have it modified on the spot. Somebody wanted to buy it from us. And then when we said no, or I didn't say it wasn't there, but when, when the technical center said no, they said, oh, okay, well, if you manufacture three of these in the next year, we'll buy them from. Unfortunately, you know, as I explained to my wife, you can't be a business and a school, so we're looking for someone who might be interested in that business in the county. Because, uh, you know, the, the, the way that butchering is done, or the way that process, meat processing is done, um, it's been proven lately that it's much better to do it onsite, rather than transport the cow and transport the, um, the poultry to a facility. It's better to do it onsite, um, and so that's what we're, we're working on.
Our teacher, by the way, is raising meat chickens.
Yeah.
For the FFA barbecue predicated on your service.
Yeah.
Here, they're, they're squeaking right as we speak.
Yeah, uh, the, the program bought the, the unit, basically, if you can think of a big panel truck, basically, it's a big panel truck that, that has been modified to be the poultry processing unit. So they, they bought it and modified it and, um, we're looking into, you know, well, maybe some of the things are patentable, you know, may, how do we make a business out of this stuff? There might be something to do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We all get the emails regarding, from the SBA, regarding, you know, what's going on in the legislature, so I don't think anyone has an actual report tonight. Uh, but I would encourage you to review the, the material.
I've been, I've been watching the, the, uh, the legislation that's going on about, uh, you know, taking away some of the, the negotiating capability of the, of the board has with teachers. Been participating in some of the discussions online too. So if anybody has any questions about what's going on with that, I'd be more than happy to discuss it.
Which bill?
The bill that has to do with taking away the, what's our fair share?
Yeah.
That's what I'm doing.
This is.
Right now, right now, if you're, if you're a, uh, if you get a teaching degree and you want to work in the state of Vermont, um, you have the option to join the union. But if, uh, if you choose not to join the union, the union still negotiates the contract for you, I guess. But, uh, in the, the legislation that's going on right now, the discussion is, well, um, why shouldn't we, uh, I don't want to use the word force, but why don't we make it law that, that everyone has to pay at least a, a certain amount, um, in order to have that benefit of the union representing them? And this is, this is kind of disquieting to me.
It's the agency fee, though.
Yeah, it's the agency fee. So everyone, uh, all, all teachers would, would have to, you know, based on the, the law, would have to pay an agency fee. Whereas now they can choose whether or not to pay the agency fee. So I, I take a special interest in it because I was a teacher, and, uh, I, I was forced to pay dues, um, back in the late seventies and early eighties. And I still have some, some feelings about that.
And it's not just teachers, you're going to support staff also, or are they the ones who?
Yeah, and all state employees will also be forced, or not forced, but by law will, will pay, uh, agency fees.
All state employees actually are going to do it unless the grandpa, maybe you're fifteen years.
Yeah, and this represents about a half a million dollars to the, uh, to the local, uh, teachers' association, uh, the state of Vermont.
Well, I think one of the arguments is that, uh, one of the arguments that EPA is making anyway is that the money is not going to locals, it's going to go to the state.
Right.
And so it doesn't, it doesn't help the local, uh, and, for instance, won't get it done out of that.
Yeah, and, and part, I guess part of the negotiation that's going on now is, well, if this is going to, um, going to become law, then there should be some stipulation where that money goes, and what it's used for. Because, um, you know, just having the money go into a fund or into an organization's general fund, um, usually doesn't benefit everyone. There I said it.
Thank you. Do we have any calls in matter to?
Do not.
Personnel?
I have a request for a leave of absence from Tim Maynes' high school English teacher. Uh, requesting a leave of absence for, um, coming year to pursue an MA in arts leadership at Syracuse University. He says, well, this is an educational opportunity, I cannot pass up, I would rather go K and U H S, I would appreciate the option of returning upon it. Appreciate it. I'm not a graduate on the faculty board. Approved an unpaid leave of absence for Tim Maynes as requested.
Do I have a motion for that?
Uh, someone.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
So the letter doesn't sound resounding that he wants to come back, it sounds like he's interested in keeping up any options. And, uh, I'm going to look. And as the managers of the school, how would you want to see with it?
Well, the, uh, English department has improved significantly over the last six years. Tim's been a big part of it, he is the hot carrier for freshman comp, and he does all the hard labor and dirty work, and has got great results. Uh, he's one of three people who are certified as drama instructors in our school. Uh, he has a, a real full career with the Lyric Theater in the room, and has a lot of theatrical opportunities that I would have, I would guess at some point that way is English teaching opportunities, but at this point, I'm not sure he knows. And I'd hate to, I'd hate to guess, I think, um, if I knew that there was a posity of good English teachers out there, you know, I, I'd feel different probably, but I know that there's hundreds will apply for any, even an internship.
And, oh, but don't get me wrong, I think Tim is great, it's just a fair question.
No, it is a good question, I, I, I feel strongly both ways. You know, I really, I'm, I'm rea- I'm ambivalent in the true sense of the word. I'll assume if he doesn't come back, I can split that.
Is there any further discussion? And then we'll proceed to vote, all in favor of a one-year leave of absence for Tim Maynes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Motion carried.
Football agreement.
Uh, too late.
My name's Lee Hodgson, and I went to here with Lisa Van Aral, talked about the board commission, if you can, you have quality of poultry, we have the Gents amount of football program. I asked for any money, so we'll put that out there. This is the third year of the program, and it's just unbelievable success we've had. Before we got there, the team had won a game three years, and now we have to get one, but we haven't seen a game. Uh, the first season we did it, the team won eight, last year were five and five at the varsity level, and made the playoffs, this year were six and four, and made the playoffs again. We had seventeen kids participate in the program, that's freshmen through seniors, um, and it was just an unbelievable success for you, we never lost a home game, we had big crowds for all the home games. The seniors this year that were on the team were Wade Steele and Gary Caldwell, and they were elected captains, which is an honor, because the players are like, uh, them had leadership abilities. Also, Damon Graff, Ryan Crown, you know, Eric Gabriel were, uh, on the team, they were seniors. The juniors were Tommy Lee Hodgson, Aaron Ral, Kyle May, and Eric Eisenhour was a long sophomore. Um, like Mr. Wong, we said we did some, uh, postseason honors too, with Wade Steele making the shrine team, and first team Division Three All-States alignment, which is huge, I mean, there's not even a football team at this school, and a kid makes a shrine team. If you don't know what the shrine team is, that's what Vermont plays in Hampshire, an all-star game. At Darvist, yep, and, um, all the money they raise goes to the shrineers, which is for the kids, and it's just an unbelievable honor, it's unheard of. I like to think that this cooperative program actually got a lot more cooperative programs than the one in the state, this is the first one at a, at a high level of football. Now they have hockey teams, other schools are getting involved, and all the studies show that the more that kids get involved, the more that school, it's going to do a school. Other honors this year were Damon Graff was named the Division Three All-States second team, Tommy Lee Hodgson was named as an All-State first team as a kid returner. We also had the JV teams where we really made progress. Now, we're Division Three, but every team we play is Division Two or Division One, and our JV team is seven and one this year. An unbelievable season, we should have been undefeated, just lost the first team the year, but didn't enough practice. But we blew out all the Division One and Division Twos, schools we played by thirty points or more, unbelievable successful season. Eric Eisenhour again was the captain for the Gents, for the JV squad, other kids that participated, we had seven freshmen, which is amazing. Brandon Sturman, Kyle Dow, Tyler Crown, Shield Jim, Hodgson, Nathan Ral, Jack Eisenhour, Brock Clark, and Ryan Payton. Um, we just had a great season, and the way that works for us is, we have to pay for busing, we also, all of these were all talking about the financial under there, we have to pay N A B. So what happens is, uh, for double sessions, we ride, uh, ride the bus twice a day, bust the kids over and bust them back, make sure the kid gets there, provide transportation, workout, my lady's been great, uh, working on the transportation part of it, and, uh, it's just been fantastic, uh, kids get along great, um, they hang out together. Mr. Wembley, Andy Capus, and Peter Manita, uh, they've been great, uh, just that's over there, and everyone just works out great, some Thursday nights, actually, all of our sixteen people over here watched games, filmed in the library. And it was just fantastic, kids just go along great, and it's a successful, successful program, and, uh, we're basically just asking, uh, your permission to allow this to happen. Because it's such a positive, I think it's a positive thing for all this, anyone.
I may give you the note that, uh, of the five seniors, we believe two of them will be continuing to play football.
At the next level, college, it's huge, Damon Graff and Wade Steele are both being looked at, Dan specifically, Cassington, I'm not sure, I think Wade is a Cassington too, but that's huge, you could play at the next level.
What, what position does Cap play?
Dan's a split add, he's a defensive add, and so he was not, he wasn't like the captain, he was a huge figure on the team, the kids really looked up to him, and Wade, like I said, I, I mean, a, a kid made in the shrine team from a school that doesn't have a football team, I mean, I mean, come on, you can't make that up.
Dan, Dan was a really good defensive man.
Yep, we just had a great year, and in the playoff game, we had over a hundred and forty yard receiving, in, in a playoff game, we don't be pro golf that much. The next year, we're seeing a brighter, there's no way we're not going to make the playoffs. I mean, this team has gotten so much better that all, most, some of the other Division III teams are claiming that we should be bumped up a little bit. That's how much better we've gotten. And again, before we came on, they had one game in two years.
How's Ernie's middle school be?
We also transported, I think it was eight to ten, seven to eight graders over. Once their season starts, they play in the tackle program over there. And I think they were at least five hundred, or at least a winning season this year. But like I said, once the school, their season doesn't start until the school starts. But every day at two forty-five, we meet up with a high school team, and we bust all the kids over. A couple of issues on the bus, we couldn't handle. I think I need a psychiatrist, if you want to deal with this on the line. I got to, I really enjoy it. The raising money is hard. Lisa Danal, great job with that. I have a fun part. I can probably do it. I didn't even like the bus so much.
Half of that's wrong.
So like I said, we're here just to get your approval to continue this program. We're not asking for any money, but Lisa Danal talked about the financial underpinning.
Could I ask a clarifying question? I think it would include Peter Manin. That is, when we got started on this, and not that I was excited at all.
Not at all.
The, one of the things we talked about originally was eventually the two programs would become a true cooperative program. We quit calling it Mount A. We'd call it Mount for Gents or Fraberham or something. And I'm wondering what kind of progress we made to those ends.
We have some great sweatshirts that, I don't know who came up with it, but they say...
Actually, great. Set up with a head coach, made sweatshirts, and on the back, it's a big football, it said, I forget what it said.
I should have known.
Yeah. For Gents, Mount A, cooperative program.
Best of both worlds.
Best of both worlds, yeah. No, these kids get along great. I mean, they've been lifelong long since this last year. And Peter Manin, I've been, he's been a great help this year. We all aspire back and forth about soccer, football. About football, we just soccer, but we had, it's a good rapport. We go along great. He said nothing about how this whole thing gives me everything I need. So he's been great.
I mean, kickball.
Oh, I watched it all.
I was gonna say, don't you mean football, not football?
So you said we had seventeen of our kids over there?
Yes.
How many do they have? I mean, is it a fifty-fifty split?
Uh, no, they actually are doing a little better in numbers, so they, we had two to four kids, so that's what it was.
So when did Vermont last win a Shrine League?
That was while?
When Lee played.
Oh, he worked my senior year. Thank you very much. Six months.
Your first year?
Yes. First year.
And you're off as a, you're not as a New Hampshire, I mean, there's so many more kids to choose from. That All-Star program is probably on its way out because it's just a, the north-south All-Star game in Vermont is very dependent. And I'm sure there's another player on the team this year too, Cody Eversander, very good player. He's going to play at the next level too, probably at Ole Miss State. But financially...
Well, I just remember sitting here a couple of years ago, and that was a big question for the board, is how are we going to raise the money? And I think, you know, give us permission, we'll bring up money. We currently have five thousand dollars after this season, so we're fine.
Nice.
We do work hard at it, but, you know, we have other things to get together, is to put on Vermont products dinner there. Lee has made us some beautiful quilts, and I finally won one this year, so it's been a great time. Car, we did a car wash. You know, we do, we do whatever we have to do to get it done, so I'm, I'm fine.
But it does cost around fifty thousand a year, plus we build it, something for the busing. Or we have to donate to Mount A, they have it, but it's worth it to be honest.
Do we have a motion?
I will move to make this so.
Second. Is there any further discussion than what we've already had? During that, all in favor of continuing the football reunion for a year, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carried.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for all your efforts. And we might pick your brand on fundraising, if you're not so good.
Yeah, she doesn't know. I don't help at all. That was why she gave me very much.
We need to elect a spring coach for JV boys lacrosse. Will Mathis? Anything you want to say for you?
Uh, he's a young man from the Middlebury, coached JV boys soccer in Alpine Skene at Middlebury. They didn't have a position for him this spring, so their losses are a game, I guess.
Do I have a motion to approve Will Mathis for JV lacrosse? Is there a second? Any discussion?
Do we have enough players for JV?
We have thirty-five right now.
Thirty-five.
It's our biggest sports sport.
How old are we going to throw?
Twenty-one, twenty-two. That's our third biggest sport.
For which, anything?
Girls.
Girls, girls. Oh, good.
They have just boys lacrosse and track. Had more kids in girls lacrosse here now. They've actually got more kids in our softball program.
And if that's a club team, right, from next year, you could make it official?
Yeah, it will be here in the fall, and to make it an official varsity team.
Any further discussion? All in favor of Will for JV lacrosse coach, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carried. Facility discussion. Who wants to start that out?
Thank you.
Thanks, Lee.
Did you guys... You all are silent, so I guess I'll, I'll go. There were several meetings amongst pieces of the facilities committee. Jeff and Kurt had an opportunity to meet. Jeff and I, Kathy had an opportunity. Kathy was at their meeting. I think you guys had an opportunity to discuss on Friday, what we talked about, so. We had Bob Worley come in and really give us a rundown of the absolute dead-on necessities that he sees for this school. You know, presented within that, the roof and the kitchen project is absolute must-dos. Presented a few other just structural things that we hadn't talked about, that are not large money issues, but that seem like they should happen to the heat plant, things like that. I'm aware that there's some interest in moving a decision tonight so that, or by the end of this week, I think it is, so that, you know, we could potentially launch a bond request coincident with the town's police station. I think we need to talk about that a little bit. I'm not sure, Jeff, where you got after we met on Monday? Monday was just that we met? So you guys had further discussion to sort of tune up our list, correct?
We did, and unfortunately didn't get far enough to have a specific recommendation for the season. But I think Neil's summary is accurate. The goals would be to deal first and foremost with life safety issues. And on that score, I think it is important to note, and I wish Sue were here, it's in the minutes, but it's, boy, I wish somebody would come and inspect the auditorium. Well, you know, I think we can take some comfort from the fact that there have been extensive investigations. And I did review the report that was prepared by L and N Consulting Engineers, a licensed electrical engineer. Very clear statement, no electrical code violations in the auditorium. Fully operable sprinkler system within the auditorium. So I'm not making light of our operational issues, but I want to be very clear about the safety of our students. It appears that we have investigated those issues, and that there are not imminent life safety issues, at least with regard to the auditorium. So I, I just want to highlight that for you. So our goals would be to deal with life safety issues first and foremost. We do have some in the kitchen that we want to make sure that we address, and certainly having a leaking roof is, if not a life safety issue, is certainly a high priority in terms of building up. We've also been working with Kathy to look at the impact over time of really creating a culture shift, which maybe isn't that much of a shift when we look at what we're actually spending on maintenance, and it's to try to bring our annual spending on maintenance up to a level where we can anticipate predictive maintenance, deal with it on an annual basis, and also begin funding the sorts of reserves that have been successfully implemented at the elementary schools and districts. So my hope, and this is as much about scheduling and, you know, busy people, my hope would be that as a facilities committee, we could get together one more time, work through the list, and be able to have a concise recommendation that the board could then assess. And if, from a timing perspective, it were important to try to do that this week, we could certainly try to get together this weekend.
Kurt, can you move to the end?
I don't know if, you know, you alluded to this fact, but one of the things that we talked about earlier, and I was, I was at the first meeting with Jeff and Kathy, and we talked about, you know, how we make a long-term commitment, you know, a shift in the, in the community's view of what we're doing here as far as the physical plan is concerned. And we talked, you know, I have in front of me some of the numbers that we put together and looked at based on, well, what happens, you know, if we fix things that need to be fixed and we start changing that attitude by putting money into capital funds and really funding a maintenance program that doesn't wait for things to go away. Anticipating, you know, I call it preventative maintenance, predictive maintenance is also a term that's used in the industry, but so that we're not constantly crying wolf. We're not asking for things that we think we're going to need in twenty years, but we're actually doing things on a regular basis. So if you, if you run the numbers, and I, we're not ready to share them yet, but if you run the numbers, it costs less to do things as a preventative measure or as a predictive measure. It costs less over time, over a long period of time, obviously, but you can do the math. Hopefully Tommy Lee can do the math, too. And so we want to make sure that we not only take care of what's wrong now, but we also take care of the root cause of some of these problems. And that is that things aren't maintained the way they should be. And I certainly understand better now than I did five years ago, let's say, that schools are not businesses. And we have to protect programmatic decreases in funding. But we're costing more money over periods of time by doing that. I think the long-term effect is going to be, is going to affect our programs. So let's, let's take this as a, as a wake-up call and, you know, make sure that we do the right thing this time, but that it also has to include a change of thought with the community. I don't know, you know, I don't know if there's a plan by the other members of the, of the board to communicate this, but we need to communicate it differently this time, too. If I can just kind of keep going on what you brought up for the benefit of those who weren't in our meetings. Kathy put together a really nice spreadsheet view, and I almost think all you need to really see is where there's blocks, consider this thing a timeline where you've got the current bond that expires, our discussion of a bond to cover the roof, kitchen, and a few ancillary things here, and then another bond that would kick in in a few years that would allow us to do the auditorium that conceivably we feel we want to do it. And in the middle of it all are these filled-in rows, and this is the investment on an annual basis in the maintenance and facility fund. So, I mean, if you can just see the shape of what this looks like, that's really all that you kind of need to know until you, you know, make a decision. Kathy's been able to document sort of the cost per hundred thousand on a, on an annual basis of the tax impact of each one of these pieces. As Kurt said, clearly much more expensive in the long term, and even in the short term, than doing what we wanted to do, but that's what the community is telling us to do, so. And one other thing I'll add, I think there's sort of a lingering concern about the stage surface. I don't know whether any of the documents that you examined provided an independent assessment, the non-independent assessments that the stage surface isn't at risk of caving in, but the stage surface certainly needs to be resurfaced. A couple of the things that we talked about as part of a first go right away would be to get that curtain out of there and replace it with a real curtain, so that at least that would dress the place up and get a decent stage surface on there. And that would be included with the kitchen roofwork, so that would work.
The anecdotal evidence on the surfaces that we've had, I think it was the Beauty and the Beast, we had a severe fall.
Right, because it's, because it's slick.
Because it's slick.
But it's not going to cave in.
No, I'm not, I don't think we're going to lose a kid through it, but we've had three falls out of the last five musicals, so.
That doesn't seem like a terrible, just because, I mean, considering how many kids are moving across the stage and dancing.
That's a great lead, aren't you?
But, no, but I mean, resurfacing that stage floor is actually absolutely something to talk about, so.
What's our timeline that we're looking at? Do we have to make a decision? Do you have anything to add, Kathy?
We're going to have to make it, if, if the city is going to have regulations or mandates, which is, they, then we need to have some adopted and signed in order, every day prior to making our plans, which will be this week.
So I know that there's been attempts at dialogue with the city. How far has that gotten? I mean, that goes all the way, you know?
I spoke with Bill Betten first on the phone, then again today. In his opinion, they have a vet meet tomorrow night, the Saturday. But in his opinion, after having talked with the city council and city manager, they did not make the decision to withhold the tar bond in the same, like, same day. They think it's going to be made fourteen. And if we were to try and pull aside or not vote, which makes sense, and try to cross the voters, then we would need to act this week. If we go beyond that, you know...
I mean, there's an absolute advantage to doing it at the same time. It makes sense. We won't incur the criticism of having cost voters extra money.
And the possibility of getting more done and using the number.
Right. The drawback is, of course, you know, the pre-appearance of competition in the Gents. And I, I know that I've heard people are mindful not wanting to have for Gents hijack the whole district, but you're right.
I don't want to put words in Bill's mouth, but I'm paraphrasing, that we do have both proposals at this point. If theirs is going to be scaled down from the police station, exactly what you want to know is scaled down from the, those of them. Because ours would reflect the same if we proceeded along the lines of the discussion. And if you vote that, it would be powerful in terms of two different pieces to the voters. As you said, we did, and ask this time.
So the facilities committee, correct me if I'm wrong, what I think I heard was, you feel you guys need one more time to get together, finalize a proposal, to come back to us?
I mean, if you threw round numbers, we could do it, but it's, all the individual details of what's in there, I don't think is all sorted out yet. Is that fair, Kathy?
I, I don't think we'd take a lot of time, but there's been a fair amount of information gathered. What it takes is synthesis, and we just have a document.
I guess we're... The reason we're doing that, and I think it's important that we were asked to do that, is not to just come back with a round number. Come back with detail and a number. So...
But I don't disagree with that.
Yeah, and I wasn't able to meet my students, so. How about eight AM tomorrow morning? It's actually, it's conceivable. I'm more than happy to... That's the funny thing. Take the time tomorrow morning and do it.
I guess where I was trying to shepherd us, for lack of a better term, is, you know, obviously, if you guys can meet again and come up with a final proposal to us... obviously, if you guys can meet again, come up with a final proposal to us, we could schedule a special meeting to adopt a warning.
Correct.
And what's our drop-dead date again?
April fourteenth.
April fourteenth.
July sixteenth.
Sunday.
So we would have to do it on Friday, we'd have to do it on Friday afternoon.
About nine AM.
It would actually have to be more like seven-thirty, but I could.
Yeah.
Yes. I'll even give you guys a wake-up call.
Unless, I mean, I'm comfortable with enough of the detail that I saw, if you guys want to put it together, you know, if you want to put together the final nuts and bolts of the specific pieces.
If we could decide as a board that we're going to form a special meeting for later in the week, why don't we decide that, so that we can figure out schedules that we need to...
I would prefer Thursday, because I'll be out of town on Friday. You don't need me, I mean, obviously.
No, well, we need a quorum, right? We do a quick meeting in your office?
If it's Thursday morning early to get out of town, all we're going to be talking is going to take five minutes, ten minutes, maybe just come to seven. Seven-thirty, seven-four.
Would people be adverse to doing it at the tail end of the workday instead, five-fifteen? Not early. I mean, I can, that's as early as I can, I have to leave for a month earlier at six-fifteen, so. I can be back in town at five-fifteen, five-twenty.
Does that work for everybody in here?
Can I say five-fifteen?
In the evening, yeah.
And just out of respect, while we say five minutes, I know Kathy would love it if it were only five minutes, we've got a fair amount of time. You as a board deserve the opportunity to look at this and ask questions, so we'd like to keep it brief, but it should be a point of discussion so that we can all in good faith go forward and reach out for support.
Positive on Thursday, so I would, I'm comfortable with...
Okay, at least four of us.
Yeah, I can do it.
I can do it.
Yes.
All right, so I guess we're looking for a motion for, toward a special meeting for Thursday, April eleventh, five-fifteen in central office, for the purpose of reviewing the facility needs, proposal, and...
I'll move it, since five-fifteen was my time.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed. Motion carried.
Can I ask a question when you're done?
Would it be reasonable for us to, for you guys, maybe to reach back out to the town and let them know that, you know, we're proceeding along those lines? Yeah, yeah. Now, you might have to do it as well, have the conversation.
Christine, you got a question?
I just, I have a question more about the long-term plan, it sounds like we've worked out the short-term plan.
Come by on Thursday evening.
Well, I'm just...
I'm happy to show you what I got after we've just walked.
I'm just curious, what are you talking about in years, in your mind, like, are we looking at that bottom auditorium, is five years away now, or is it ten years away?
No, no.
Two years away?
No, it's not. Like, five years.
Okay.
The way that's, I can show you this, the most recent spreadsheet, it's kind of, it's a good plan, is what it is.
It sounds good, five years is a long time.
Money, we can sell that, in five years, this will all be paid for, and we can sell that.
I have faith that you could probably sell it soon.
Yeah, but...
I still have a big egg on my head from that baseball bat from the last court.
And this is the, this is the shift, and this is a shift that I want to try to make in the community, is, you know, rather than saying, let's quarrel the money and do it, let's say, let's show in good faith that we're putting money aside to make this happen on a schedule, and we're doing it, you know, on a schedule, rather than in one big...
Which makes sense, there's a part of me that feels like we could maybe do that simultaneously with, wow, we really need these upgrades and renovations.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I'm looking at in, and I think that that's the detail that Neil is talking about. You know, our maintenance budget is woefully inadequate.
Yeah.
You know?
Do that.
So we need to change that first, and build some momentum, and then I think the community will have a more, more trust that we're doing the right thing.
Yeah.
More, more confidence that we are doing the right thing.
I just, I'm concerned, you know, I've worked on that stage for the last five years and seen how it deteriorates over the year, and in five more years...
We're going to, we're talking about resurfacing it.
No, it's not, I'm not just talking about the floor, it's the whole, the whole place, it's not just the floor, it's everything, everything is deteriorating. And it has been for a long time, let's face it, it's like, it's like everything here, you put Band-Aids where you have to, so you can function and make productions happen and let students get up on stage and perform, but, gosh, in five more years, where are we going to be there? I'm worried about that.
Well, hopefully in five more years, it'll cost less.
Okay, I hope so.
If you're restructuring a well-maintained building, that's one thing, but if you're rebuilding a poorly maintained building, that's another, because, you know, there's some, you know...
Yeah.
I did have one last question while we're on this topic, looking for input both from the board and administration, and that is, to the extent that we talk about things such as funding maintenance at a higher level or creating reserves, those are statements we're making today in good faith, sitting here at the table. Do we have a vehicle by which we can institutionalize those as policies? Can it be a policy of the board that it will present to the voters annually a funding of a reserve at an amount not less than blah blah blah, or equal to X percentage of the budget?
You can do that by setting up a capital fund.
So that could be the capital fund. Could it be the policy of the board with respect to budgeting for maintenance? And it will be crunch time, we will be sitting here concerned about our ability to offer appropriate programs, and we'll look at maintenance costs and say, well, gee, there's a place we could save some money, that's why it happened.
That's why, I think that's why we are where we are.
But, and that's my question, how do we prevent that in the future?
You just described it.
So it's a, it's a, it'd be adoption policy.
You could do that, and then you'd also have to have the support of the board.
Great.
Right, I mean, but at least, I think what Jeff is saying is it creates the expectation that the board will annually offer one-hundred-and-fifty thousand or two-hundred-thousand-dollar additional chunk, additional ask, outside the budget for the capital fund.
When you set up the capital fund, that would be the purpose, stated purpose.
Anything else on the facilities discussion?
Well, Kerry and Chris and I met, and we came, just to talk about how to present, and I would like to, we could, you know, present something, present that information to the public, but, you know, we were kind of trying to brainstorm in how you get the public to come to those presentations, which we've never been very successful.
Well, I'm trying.
So, I thought about having a raffle. So you get your little card in the mail, and you have to bring that card with you to the meeting, and then the card goes in the box.
Out of the box comes...
Well, you get all this...
Fred, dude.
Oh, that'll be on that. I don't, I know, here's your tip, you know, how do you get people to come to things? You know, you can conserve food, though that's not really going to happen, so...
Do you have to go over there? Yeah, there's a part of that. We have to also put, we have to put the plan in a very pictographic format on our websites and show where we are time-wise, going along the plan, and where it's working, where it hasn't, and just be real transparent and clear and sort of build that expectation.
And frankly, that's one reason that a May fourteenth vote is not ideal, from my perspective, it gives us less time to build support, and that's the con to trying to move that rapidly, is we just don't have...
Yeah, no, there's none, right.
The con to not doing that, Jeff, I know you understand, is that we'll probably be talking about having a bond in February of next...
Well, or June, I mean, even if we push it to June, it would just, it would give us that many more options for groups that only meet once a month than we've, you know, we may, if we've missed April, we may not be able to get into their May cycle, if you want to try to sell us, it would give us that much more time.
So, but if we did vote in June, so first of all, I think getting people out, graduation leave, school, et cetera, we couldn't largely have been until thirty days or less, so first week of July.
Wait three days.
I think the benefit, you know, if we, if we do have a yes-to-go on May fourteenth, I could have bond application, and submit for May fifteenth, and then if there was a petition, I could pass that the application through.
So it's not ideal.
Not ideal, but if we decided not to, we decided to wait, then we could always make do a short-term plan, and then pay for the improvements that we do go up there and spell. There are always, it's not intended to see this happening.
Right. Anything else on the facilities?
I want to just report to the board tonight that we have formed a committee, I've asked Deb White, who's a middle school teacher, to facilitate the committee, includes two students, a member of the support staff, four teachers, three from the middle school, one from the high school, a representative from CANTA, the Teachers Association, a member of the school board, it's new to participate, two parents and a principal. And we had thirty-one applications, not all to qualify for position, except a fair number, I guess we agree. And it appears that there are approximately twelve, thirteen qualified candidates. What we're going to do is give access to school spring, which is how we deal with our applicants, each individual on the committee will have the opportunity to screen the applicants, and then we'll be again determining who they like to interview, and I'll be asking the code, three or four names to me, and the recommendation to the board. We're hoping that the process can take place and be concluded by mid-May, so that's our time.
Midnight. I guess school districts move faster than the state of government, the speed of government.
We don't have a lot of conversation. So that's, I see it.
So Deb White will be doing the consultation of the committee itself. What's your little idea?
It's going to be a little conversation.
Yeah, I actually am, one conversation I'd like to have, and I don't really want to have it tonight, just because of the hour already that it is, is I'd really like to talk about what the board feels is the strategic direction and how we want to, you know, what kind of person we're looking for, and that conversation would be good to have that before engaging in a, you know, shooting for a mid-May hire. So, maybe we do have to talk about it now, but it is another item on the agenda.
I have a question, is there a firm job description being made, is it replacing Peter's position, is Peter's filling it right now, or is...
Essentially, we advertised for a principal to cover grades seven through nine.
Okay.
We didn't identify it as an assistant or associate or anything like that.
Okay.
Qualities that we'd like to see in the applicants, some of them are very basic, and the only concern I have about what you just said is that people that are taking this, and we've got the possibility of looking at twelve or thirteen people that are available, it's, we delay that until June, I think.
Oh, Carol, I'm sorry.
Just real quick, I know that law has the superintendent the ability to, to bring one applicant to the school at a time, so if he's looking for three or four, say, the search committee is really set on maybe one or even two, but because he wants three or four, they have to present that to him, will, will there...
Yes.
Will that be presented to the board, you know, that they're really in favor of this one person, will that have a, you know, greater weight?
Carol, in all probability, unless, unless there's something in the background that would preclude hiring the person, if the committee recommends the person, that's who I'm going to recommend. Thank you.
It would be helpful, given the timeframe and understanding that federal recommendations does come, that there's a context that helps us understand how that person fits in, both in terms of potential changes in school population, and I can't think of all the acronyms, but between common core and educational quality and our annual plans, what strengths does that person bring that helps us address what we've identified as strategic needs at this school? It's going to be really interesting.
And I'm all ears for your all's concerns, if you want me to represent, and one thing I do want to kind of feedback to you, is I'm looking at this very much as someone who's a leader and manager of the facility, not the facility, the building, but of the staff and the programs, and, you know, that's kind of the hat that I will be wearing, with the assumption that everybody on this qualified list has at least some academic firepower. You know, we want to maximize the kids, what the kids get out of this administrative, but I also want to make sure that, you know, the staff is getting somebody who can, you know, really provide great leadership, in addition, you know, to backfill the leadership that you provided already, so.
What I was going to say is, let's also take a look at, and I think what made me think of this was when Jeff said, you know, let's look into the future, what the future needs are, not just replacing what Peter's been doing, but also look at, for candidates that have strengths in other areas, that we might seek, you know, talking about in the future.
We do have a need for an executive session tonight for the board to discuss the superintendent's evaluation, which is a personnel matter. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
You do.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks very much.